I'm going to call our meeting to order. I know you only see two board members here, but we have a third who is online with us today. George, are you there? Unmute yourself if you are. Do we have technical difficulties?
Yep.
George, sorry. We were muted. Can you say, can you switch your present again?
Here. Hey, there we go. All right. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. And I am going to first also let everyone know, I'm sure that there have been questions and people are like, what's going on? Last Monday, our board did vote to go mask optional in all of our buildings. And so that's why you see some of us sitting without masks and some sitting with. But there is nothing, no one is being looked at differently for doing one or the other. So we respect everyone's wishes and we hope that everyone stays safe. First, I'm going to ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Ms. Cowart's class, Ms. Cowart class from Asheville Primary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor, George?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
James is an aye. All right. Next, I have our good news with Ms. Ashley Michelle Dublin.
Good evening, Dr. Jean, Chairman Carter, and members of the board. Tonight, I have the honor of sharing a few good news standout since our last time together. First up, I would like to honor our Hall Fletcher Elementary School robotics team. If y'all will please come forward. Board members, students from across the state recently put their robotic skills to the test for North Carolina's BECS Robotics State Championship. After finishing in the top 10 qualifying events, all four of Hall Fletcher's robotics teams were invited to compete. And for the second year in a row, our team students came home as state champions, as well as winners of both the Excellence Award and the Build Award. This means that they're heading to the World Championship, again, World Championship, this May in Dallas, Texas. In fact, of the seven qualifying spots for the entire state of North Carolina, Hall Fletcher is taking three of them. Yeah, it's a big deal. This trip is a true once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to compete with the best teams, not only from this country, but across the globe. So congratulations are more than deserved to our teams named Happily Ever Disaster, The Pringles, and 4.5 Musketeers. Mr. Osweiler, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you very much. Yeah, it was a, it was a true honor to get to work with these kids this year. A lot of people don't understand how much time and effort goes into a program like this. Since August, these kids come in after school three nights a week for an hour and a half. They come in during their lunch periods, they come in before school, they squeeze every, every minute they can into this program. And, you know, in August and September, it's hard to teach these kids and tell them that your hard work will eventually pay off. And it was so cool a few weeks ago to see that actually happened for three of our teams. So now the, the real craziness begins, trying to plan a trip for 11 kids to Texas. So this is where we need the community support, we need the school district support, we need the board support, we need our, our whole community support to raise the money we need to get down there. Our PTO has graciously been taking the lead on some fundraising efforts for us. They set up a GoFundMe page, they're actively going out in the community, talking to businesses and seeing what kind of support they can get. And, and, you know, it's, it's not cheap to send kids to Texas, but as one who's taken teams before when I used to live in Virginia, I can tell that it is truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to see these kids get to meet kids from other states, from other countries. They might get to play with kids that don't even speak their same language, but to see them communicate with each other and to give them truly a global perspective, a global experience, and to see the camaraderie between all of these kids that come in from all over the world, it truly is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So I'm grateful that, that we had the opportunity, I'm grateful for our administration, Ms. Buchanan and Mr. Benfield, who support this program. I would personally like to see this program in other schools as well, not just for the, the big stuff like this, but it really is a, a great learning opportunity for our students. So I just humbly ask for support from our community to help get these kids this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that they'll never forget.
Not too shabby of a way.
Do we know, do we know the cost of this?
Yes, sir.
That we're trying to raise?
We, so the cost of the entire competition, or to go to Worlds, is $15,000. And Mr. Osweiler probably has a better handle of it. When I last looked at the GoFundMe page, we'd raised about $6,500.
Thank you.
All right. With, we're going to continue with our good news. Next, I would like to invite Ms. Nicole Kush to please come forward. So Ms. Kush, on behalf of the State Board of Education and the State Superintendent, I am delighted to recognize Cilsa and our outstanding staff for its commendable graduation rates. Cilsa's class of 2021 earned one of the highest in the entire state of North Carolina.
I just want to say.
Another one.
Sorry? I just want to say a huge thank you to our incredible staff and our amazing students and our administration and also the staff and the administration from Asheville High. We have had an incredible group come together and we're just so honored to work together and do all the things that we do every day to get our kids across the stage. Thank you very much.
I would also like to honor Claxton Elementary Schools' Ms. Shannon Hunt, if you will please come forward. Ms. Hunt received the North Carolina Association for the Gifted and Talented Outstanding Teacher Award just a few weeks ago. The outstanding teacher of the gifted award is presented annually to a North Carolina teacher of gifted students who exhibits a strong commitment to gifted education through professional experience, professional organizations, and service in the area of education. As this year's recipient, Ms. Hunt will receive an award valued at about $250 and a complimentary conference registration for the following year's event. The 22, 2021-2022 school year, Mark Smith's hunt's 25th in the classroom and for her teaching is a calling and a career that fulfills her even when it is a little bit difficult. It is absolutely our pleasure to honor your, honor you for this outstanding recognition. Now, I would like to ask for our Monford North Star Academy Science Olympia team to After competing in events like Disease Detectives, Write It, Do It, Crime Busters, Ornithology, and Moused Trap Vehicles, our students won first place overall in both varsity and junior varsity this year's Science Olympiad. In fact, with their win, our varsity team will be one of three from the region who have the opportunity to attend the state tournament in Raleigh this upcoming month.
I could, I couldn't be prouder of these kids. I just want to let you know, I've done this for a long time, been a coach. I just want to let you know, I've done this for a long time, been a coach and so has Ms. Moore, and I've never gone to States. These kids, and this is the first time, so they're real excited. I know I'm excited, I don't know who's more excited. But this couldn't be done without, and before I get started, we have 45 kids on this team. And so these are just the ones that could make it today. So we have most of our girls on our varsity team, they're all playing sports, so they're doing that today. So it's not just these fellows, but I'm glad they, they showed up for us today. Her six, we have six coaches that don't get paid, this is afternoon joy, just for the love of science and to do this for the kids. And it's a lot of fun, it really is. And funding it, it's not a, it's not a cheap thing to do. Our PTO has been phenomenal, our parents have been so generous, and we had so many kids try out this year that we had three teams, which is, it's, it's expensive to go, but we did it and we made it happen. And I couldn't be prouder of these kids. Just a little more detail about the actual competition, there are 23 events. And our, our varsity, which are, which is, is our eighth graders this year, nine of them, nine of them earned first place, nine of them earned second place, and three of them earned third place. That's 21 out of the 23 events they placed in. And our varsity, eight of, eight of them got first place and our, we had JV1 and JV2, so they, they, they both won, one, one to seven first places for the JVs. And then there were four teams in our JV teams where those kids placed higher than any other varsity and JV in the entire regional competition. So these kids really, I'm going to miss these eighth graders, but I feel like I got to have them in, when they were sixth graders, and then we had a little snafu in the world happen and we didn't get to compete last year, so to get to take them to States is really special. So I can't wait. Y'all wish us luck. Thank you.
I would also like to bring your attention to Asheville High School's Nick Mueller and Xander White, who have been selected as finalists in the 67th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Students first compete for college scholarships and recognition by qualifying with a high score on the PSAT. Approximately 1.5 million entrants qualify each year. And of those 1.5 million, the highest scores across the nation are then recognized as a commended scholar, semifinalist, or finalist. And both our Asheville High School students are among just 15,000 finalists across the country. So this distinction now puts them in the running to receive scholarships together worth nearly $30 million. So obviously, we cannot wait to hear what's going to happen once our merit scholarship winners are announced later this spring. We're excited that we have two finalists. Now, I would like to ask Ms. Trina Jackson to please come forward so we can celebrate you as well. Ms. Jackson has been named as the District's NCAT Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year. Yeah. The Natural Hair Educator is a 1983 graduate of Asheville High School and has been teaching, yes, she's a cougar all the way, and she has been teaching at her alma mater for over 25 years. NCAT CTE Teacher of the Year process was established to honor and retain excellent teachers just like Ms. Jackson in North Carolina's public schools. Ms. Jackson is our inaugural award recipient and we cannot be prouder. Congratulations on this. Last but not least, I wanted to bring your attention to the fact that Asheville City Schools was one of just two districts from North Carolina and just a handful of districts across the entire country who was recognized for using ESAR funds to recruit and retain staff as part of the White House's March 11 fact sheets. So per your approval, as you know, this past December, the Asheville City Board of Education decided to use federal ESAR retention incentive payments as a gesture of gratitude to our employees for their hard work and continued employment during the pandemic, and the White House took notice of that. So thank you very much, Board, and we're excited that we were recognized at such a distinct level.
Thank you.
This concludes my good news for this month. We had a lot and it was my pleasure to bring it to you and I look forward to sharing more with you next month.
Thank you so much, Ashley Michelle. It's, I tell you, it's great to see kids back in the room and to see people back in the room too. I, this makes me feel really good, so thank y'all for being here today. So next on our agenda, we have our public comment. And before we start public comment, I'm going to read this very lengthy statement about public comment. "In accordance with Board Policy 2310," as people leave the room, I know, I'm boring with the public comment, but it's all right. "Please note that we provide time for public comment. As a reminder, the Board of Education greatly appreciates your interest in the Asheville City Schools and we welcome your comments to the Board. Please be mindful of the following guidelines. Unless otherwise approved by the Board, time for public comment shall not exclude, exceed 30 minutes for in-person and 15 minutes for virtual speakers. Multiple speakers from a group who are presenting on the same topic may choose to elect one speaker for the group. If a single speaker is used by any group, they shall be allocated five minutes instead of three to address the Board. If your group chooses this option, please identify everyone in the group when you sign up to speak. If an unusually large number of people wish to speak, the Board may decide to A) reduce the time allotted for each speaker and/or B) require the designation of a group spokesperson. Substitute speakers will not be permitted and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. Please be respectful. A disruption by any person or persons of a public meeting will not be tolerated and will result in a removal from the meeting. Incorrect or misleading information presented by a speaker may be responded to at the direction of the chairperson. Public comment allows you to provide the Board of Education with your thoughts and/or relevant information concerning the Asheville City Schools. Therefore, Board members will not normally respond to individuals who address the Board except to request clarification. In order to make a public comment, individuals must be present and make their comments in person or virtually, online. Please understand that confidential student and personnel matters will not be discussed during public comments and the Board does not accept personnel complaints through public comment. If you have a concern about an employee or a student matter, please contact or see the superintendent after the meeting." Individuals will have, again, three minutes. The green light will go on, you start, the yellow light gives you 15 seconds, and then red light, we ask you to please end your thoughts. Our system of public education depends on your involvement, so please feel free to share with us during the time for public comment. First on my list, I have Mr. Daniel Withrow. And Daniel, you have three minutes.
See, can you hear me?
Yep.
Take this off. Okay, good afternoon, Asheville City School Board and Superintendent Jean Freeman. I speak today on behalf of the Asheville City Association of Educators. A few minutes ago, I presented you with almost 1,000 signatures on a petition. Custodians, teachers, child nutrition workers, instructional assistants, principals, other staff, parents, and community allies detailed our worries about current and future staffing levels in our district as well as other concerns. The signatories urge you to include our specific concrete priorities in the budget that you submit to the Buncombe County Commissioners, and we urge the Buncombe County Commissioners to fully fund the budget. To be clear, we do not ask you for a living wage because we're ignorant of the cost of the proposal. And to be clear, asking for a higher local salary supplement comes after we spent months analyzing the supplements across the state and comparing them to local costs of living. Indeed, every priority in the petition has been considered thoughtfully and in awareness of its cost and discussed among many, many stakeholders. While we are eager to delve into the specifics of these costs, we must do so with a solutions-oriented mindset. Determining the costs is a precursor to determining the necessary budget request. Our current budget is quite simply outdated. Asheville's growth and the needs of our students far outstrip current funding for our schools. The stories you'll hear tonight offer stark, often heartbreaking, evidence of our budgetary shortcomings. The nearly 1,000 signatories of the petition also know that you're not the only decision-makers in this process. You are, however, the next decision-makers. Staff who work on the front lines every day and parents who talk about school every day with their children have worked together to determine what our district needs and having presented these priorities to you, we need you to take the next step. We need you to vote on a budget for our district that includes these priorities and we need you to work with local elected officials to find ways to fund them. Once you pass this budget, please know that we will be there with you. The overwhelming majority of school staff who have signed the petition will support you in your negotiations with county staff and commissioners. We will help you with the research that you need, we will write letters and make phone calls, we will tell our stories to the media and to the commissioners. Our organizing work over the last several months will continue. We are in an unprecedented moment right now. The decisions of the next few weeks will reverberate in our district for many years to come. Staff have organized in a way that we have never organized before to tell you what our children need. We stand here today to ask you to support these needs fully and join us in asking elected officials to show equal support. Our kids can't wait. I've got copies of the petition for other Board members, may I approach to offer those to you? Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Next, I have Mr. Pepe Acebo. And you will have three minutes.
I'm here today to speak as the co-president of the Monford North Star Academy Parent Teacher Organization about the importance for a preschool foundation for middle school success. The current discussion about reducing the number of preschool classrooms has an effect on early literacy and future success. And the idea that we can close the facility at 441 Haywood Road and that won't impact the number of classrooms available is greatly concerning. As you learned last year, it takes a while to get licensure for a new pre-K classroom. As you learned last year, preschools that have four classrooms have the option of cutting the amount of outdoor space. They don't need as much outdoor space and as much outdoor materials and it is a much more efficient way to have a preschool that serves our kids if they have four classrooms or more. Right now, we have a facility at 441 Haywood Road that has 15 classrooms that are currently licensed or licenseable immediately as pre-K classrooms. And that's according to the preschool program director, Susannah Smith, that there are 15 classrooms that could be used for a quality preschool experience. One of the wonderful, successful things with the Asheville City preschool model is that it's not just Head Start kids. I don't know if you've seen the recent study that came out of Tennessee that questioned the concentration of Head Start kids as being less successful in early childhood development in pre-K in future success because it wasn't a mixed cohort. And that, that process over at Asheville City preschool of combining full pay, NC pre-K state-sponsored slots, locally-sponsored slots, and Head Start-sponsored slots in the same classroom creates a more successful milieu for a more successful early childhood experience. I hope that the Board will look again at that facility and I'll say that all of the upgrades that were stated in the 7 million that have to be done, most of them don't have to be done to keep the facility open next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Vicky Hotto. And Ms. Hotto, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm here to speak about in support of a living wage for all Asheville City Schools staff. I am an EC teacher at Asheville High School and to be honest with you, I don't know that I will be returning next year. I love working with the students, I have amazing colleagues, I love Asheville High School, I love my job, but my family cannot afford to live here. I want to tell you that we are paying almost $2,000 a month to rent a house that is less than 800 square feet and is not sustainable for our family. We are currently in the process of trying to purchase a home and I received an email that Asheville City Schools had started a partnership with a company called Landed. And I looked into it and I have to say, I'm personally offended that you would set staff up with a predatory scam lending agency and funnel our hard-earned money to the already wealthy bankers and set us up to have a second lien on our home rather than just paying us a living wage so that we can afford to buy a house on our own.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Sean Dunn. And Mr. Dunn, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hey, George, I didn't, Mr. Cyber, again.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you all. I did not prepare to speak or plan to speak. I came here tonight just to support the Asheville staff and teachers. It's important to me. I got to know some of you through the APS process. And I think there's a couple topics, I guess, that are relevant is continuation from that discussion. When I made my comments that night, I talked about the shortsightedness around the preschool and pre-K, the amount of investment that's going into pre-K and really limiting the amount of facility space that's available. So, look, I don't know what the answer is there. I hope that you work with the county, I hope that you work with ideas like Mr. Acebo said too of, obviously, I would love if that school was still there. I think you, you know where many of us in the community stand on that. So, but also, I'd say the other point for why I came here tonight is that a lot of the reason for that, the decisions that were made that night were to invest in other priorities and to make Asheville City Schools more equitable. And I really, you know, I look at the requests from staff and from teachers and I can't, you know, I think it is a very equitable type of investment to make, both for the, the staff and teachers that rely on a living wage as well as the students that depend on public education, that deserve the best teachers. And when, you know, people are forced to potentially leave the district to, you know, to earn, that, that's not really providing for, for our kids. So, look, I just will end, I'll, I'll own my own privilege here, right? I, I am someone that has the ability to make other choices. There's others, a lot of choices around in Asheville, but I don't want to. Like, there are many of us that don't want to. We want the public school to work, we want the public school to work for everyone involved, for the community, for, for students, for staff. And I say that as someone that like grew up, my mom was an executive assistant in a public school, it's really important to me. It's really important to me. So, you know, I think there's two things, two topics tonight that can advance some, some good things on. So, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Sandy Abernathy. And Ms. Abernathy, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi. Sorry, he was a little tall. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a third grade teacher at Lucy S. Herring. I'm also a building representative there for ACAe. During this petition drive, we got to talk to every single staff member in our building. And we were astounded how many told us they are not coming back. I know six amazing teachers that are definitely not coming back next year because we don't have the support. We don't have people coming in to give us breaks for lunch or bathroom. We don't have time to make copies. We don't, I mean, there, there's so many instructional assistants that are driving three different bus routes each way to school and back. We should have 11 instructional assistants in our building. We worked with three or four most of the year. It's just, it's, it's crazy and people just are fed up. I talked to somebody today that she's like, I worked till 10 o'clock last night. I didn't get to spend time with my family this weekend and I'm still not prepared. There's so much to do. It's not one little thing, two little things, three little things. It, it's 100 little things that is just suffocating our educators and our support staff. And I, I'm here to tell you, there's going to be a huge crisis. If there's not that pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, if we don't know that there's going to be help next year, I know six personally that are amazing educators, but I bet there's another six or 12 that's considering it. And I don't want to see students at my school not having the, the teachers that they love every year be there for them because we just can't do it anymore. And the instructional assistants need a living wage. There's somebody that said she never took home more than 1,600. Well, if rent's 2,000 a month, how can you possibly live? I mean, we're not talking, we want to go on vacations and buy a boat. We're talking about, we want to feed our families. We want to pay rent. We want to have electricity to heat our homes. We want to have gas to get back and forth to work. We don't want to have to work four jobs and not get to see our own children. I mean, it's not luxuries we're asking for. It's common things that we need to survive and to be able to thrive and be there for our own families as well as the family we have at school. I'm, I'm really sorry to say, but you've got a lot of educators and support staff that are not coming back next year if we don't find a way to have some kind of hope. And I hope that you do.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Amy Sheeler. She, Sheeler. And Ms. Sheeler, you have three minutes.
Thank you for hearing our comments. I'm Amy Sheeler. I work at Asheville Middle School and my daughter attends Asheville High School. In September, she lost her child development teacher that was her favorite class at the time. She had that class at the end of the day and she really enjoyed the curriculum and her teacher, I don't even know the reason, disappeared. So, it took, I think, two and a half months for them to find her a replacement. That teacher came in about mid-November, just in time for that state exam, thank goodness, right? And she, during that time, they had teachers floating in and out. It's a 90-minute block. Two teachers would come in and cover. Often, no plans were there in place. So, it was this basically free time. Now, my teach, my student did not, my daughter did not complain about the lack of assignments. However, I just, I mean, this is, this is the time where she needs to be engaged in her academics and it's happening all over the district. I'm, I don't need to tell you how many teachers we've lost, how many classrooms are being collapsed into other classrooms. I know it's happening at the middle school where there's just, there's nobody who wants to come in and work. And our, our instructional assistants are being pulled in every direction. I drive past Sonic every morning. Every morning, I read the marquee, $20 plus an hour. We can't compete. We simply can't compete with a fast food restaurant that pays more. And I know we get health insurance. That's a benefit that we have to factor into the cost. This is a problem that has to be solved through our Asheville City Council. You all are our connection to Asheville City Council. We have to find the money. Once upon a time, people were begging to work for Asheville City Schools because our supplement paid enough to make people want to live here in this beautiful area. And no longer can we afford to even live in our city. I drive 40 minutes every day. I know I'm not alone. So, thank you again for listening to us. Like Sandy said, we're losing more teachers next year. I know it's coming down the pipeline. They tell me. We are losing more teachers and it's going to be a crisis if we don't somehow find the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Michelle, do we have anyone online?
No, sir. Nobody signed up for virtual public comment today.
Thank you. So, that is the end of our public comment section. Thank you for everyone who did speak. Next, I have our consent items on the, that need to be voted on. We have our work session minutes from February 7th, our closed session minutes from February 7th, the regular meeting minutes from February 14th, our middle school ELA adoption, budget amendments, our student releases to Buckham County for a 21, 22 school year, and placement of all Asheville primary school students, and then our policy, second read and final reads for the Safety and Student Transportation Series 630, 6305 and 8305 Policy Procedure, Federal Grants Administration Procurement. Do I have a motion to accept our consent items?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, George?
No.
Peyton?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
James is an aye.
Ms. O'Connor, moving forward, will you please speak into the mic? I just want to make sure people can hear you. Thank you.
Next, we have our personal report number eight. Can I have a motion to accept our personal report?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Anybody?
Second.
All right. All in favor, George?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
All right. Our, that passes our personal report as well. Next, we have our superintendent's report. And actually, before the superintendent speaks, I, I just wanted to acknowledge Asheville City Schools families, we have a lot of people who are being impacted by the conflict in Ukraine. Want to make sure that everyone knows, and I'll just read this. So, we want to reach out to our families so we can collectively support our young people as they navigate this new and challenging time. Our district is made up of students and families from a wide range of races, cultures, and backgrounds. We have Ukrainian students as well as families who serve our country and the armed forces. Our schools are, are a safe and welcoming place for all of our students and families and we want to reach out to you so we can collectively support our young people as they navigate these challenging times. Additionally, we speak now about what is going on in Ukraine. We recognize there are other wars and situations that have contributed to loss of human life happening all over the world. Humans suffering everywhere is an atrocity, even if it's not making the news. We do have counselors available at each of our schools to support our students as they work through their thoughts and feelings. And so, please do not hesitate to have your child reach out if they, to them or any other trusted adult if they have any questions. We know that we have a huge Ukrainian population here in Asheville and they make up a lot of our schools, of our students in both Asheville and Buckham County school system. So, just wanted to make sure that people know that they have an outlet if they need it. So, Dr. Freeman?
ACS will be hosting our annual Career Fair on Friday, March 25th and Saturday, March 26th at the Asheville Middle School. You can go to our website at Careers and go to the Career tab for more information. We currently have 41 people signed up to join us and the goal is 100. In terms of equity, MARTA is continuing to support departments with asset and justice-based practices, thinking, and language. We will host another youth REI training in partnership with the foundation in the future. MARTA is also working to revamp district-wide PTO and invited PTO leaders to attend REI for a shared analysis. Student Services, Luke McKenzie and Asheville City School Foundation have worked together to get additional mental health support for our high school campus. Thank you to the foundation. Counselors and coaches have worked together to make sure our students maintain the GPAs needed to continue their education after high school. Several of our students have signed to take their talents to colleges and universities and we're very proud of them. Ashley, Michelle, and Dylan have captured some of those exciting moments and we're sharing them on ACS social media. We are currently working on allotment positions and transfers for next year. We're doing an evaluation of staffing allotments in all areas across the district. This includes a comparison of district staffing to state allotment, allotments, and review of all transfer requests from one location to another. District leadership will be meeting with each principal to review staffing allotments for the 22, 23 school year. I would just like to say too, I'm very concerned with our staffing for next year. This is not an issue that is problematic just for Asheville City Schools. Whoever we are here because we're worried about Asheville City Schools. I am concerned about staffing in the future. As the speaker just said, when people are offering 20 bucks an hour at fast foods, you're going to see people moving out. And this is a problem everywhere. And I think it's going to be a national epidemic that's going to be far-reaching to students. And this city is very expensive to live in. We all know that as a newcomer who's been here for two and a half years. It compares to Las Vegas, Pittsburgh. Actually, it seems to be more expensive than Pittsburgh. It's more expensive than many of the other larger metropolitan areas in other states. And as I saw the sign that says, you know, a living wage, I think, is 1770, I don't even know how you'd live here for that. And we also have the conundrum of a budget that is depleting. And it's going to be a hard fall, I think. But I do think we need to push both our commissioners and our city council to recognize that we are an urban school district and we have all the problems of an urban school district. And I'm going to continue to talk about an urban school district. We don't do that enough here and really push that we need more funding. If not, people are going to go where they can make money and afford to make a living for their, for their family. Anyway, lots of good stuff, but we have some concerns. So, thank you for listening.
I, I say this every meeting and I'm going to say it again. We really wish that we could pay everyone what they deserve. Unfortunately, we do not have the funds. We need every single one of you to reach out to our city council, to our county commissioners, and to our legislators in Raleigh. We need help. We're, we can't do this. We don't have the money. You have the power to make things happen. We are the intermediaries. We do talk, we do meet, and we are meeting and talking all the time. However, you are the ones that have the power to make things happen and we need you to start speaking. Your voices count and we need for everyone to hear them, please.
Thank you. Next, on our agenda, we, speaking of budgets. At our last work session last week, the Georgia Harvey, our CFO, had asked for some budget direct, direction. And so, after consulting and reaching out to the board members, there were a couple of things that we came up with that, that were, these are basic things. These are things that anyone who is working on a budget should be doing anyway. But Georgia, just to give you some more direction, you know, the board would like to have a summary of our anticipated local revenue amounts for school operations. That's, that's a no-brainer for next year. Also, we want to see what the expenditures look like for next year as well. One that's very important to the board is that we have a budget that allows us to keep all of our current staff and to bring on more staff if needed, but not lose, not fixing our budget by letting people go or closing schools or consolidating schools. So, we want to make sure that that's happening. And also, just leave as much in our savings account as we can. That's our, our fund. We always hear the term fund balance, but in the grand scheme of things, that's our savings account. And you can't dip into your savings account over and over and over and over again and expect it to replenish itself magically without putting something back into it. So, those are some of the directions, Georgia, for, for April's meeting.
And that would be current staff?
Current staff.
Even if the position is not filled?
Yes.
But we need, okay.
Yeah, yeah, current staff.
So, it's really current positions?
Yes. Yeah, we don't want to get rid of our current staff. So, so, as we've said, as Martha eloquently put it, please reach out to city council, reach out to Buckham County Commissioners, reach out on the state level. State needs to give schools more money, plain and simple. I said it, you can hang me if you want to, but the state has to step up. North Carolina used to be one of the premier states for education and now we are below South Carolina. That's, not trying to talk bad about South Carolina, so no one crucify me over that, but we can do better. So, reach out to your, reach out to your state representatives as well because they need to, they need to pony up a little bit more. So, I'll get off that hot horse. Next, we have our announcements in future meetings. Open enrollment is continuing until, actually, today was the last day of open enrollment. So, we will have an update on that next month at our board meeting. March 23rd, we have our two-hour delay for high school and middle schools. On March 25th, there's an early dismissal day. That's for staff development. Dr. Freeman already mentioned it, but our Career Fair is going to be March 25th and there is a barbecue dinner on March 25th. And then we have a Career Fair again on March 26th. We have an optional teacher workday, no school for students on Monday, the 28th. Then we have our next closed slash work session board meeting will be Monday, April 4th here in the boardroom. And then our regular board meeting will be on Monday, April 18th. That'll be the week after spring break. Is there anything else from anyone on the board, Dr. Freeman? George?
No.
Peyton? Okay. Martha?
Nope.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Anybody?
Second.
All right. All in favor, George?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.